Madam Secretary, please note for the record that all council members are present. We have a full forum. I will now open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, I want to welcome our citizens here tonight who've come to either participate or just observe our proceedings. You're always welcome and your comments are always, we look forward to hearing you. With that in mind, we will move on to items from council. I think Ms. Scott has a...
Yes.
Is she there?
I think council may remember that I made a suggestion of looking at some signs that are sort of public information about panhandling and other alternative ways of helping situations. And so it's back on the agenda so that we can talk about it and make sure everybody likes the direction we're going. And I understand that staff has been working on it and has some information for us to get this started.
Absolutely, yeah. And to get it started, maybe Donald, if you can kind of just provide an overview maybe of the sign, potential locations, just to kind of just kick off the conversation. If there are any questions related to, you know, existing laws or any enforcement, the police chief is also prepared to answer any questions associated with that as well. And we have a physical printout of what a mock sign would look like, and I can distribute that amongst council as you show it on the monitor.
Sure, you'll put that on the monitor, James. Thank you. The sign, there you go. So as Councilwoman Scott mentioned, she had talked to us at council about coming up with some signs that were kind of an anti-panhandling sign that we could place throughout different intersections of the city. So we came up with some different versions, and after talking with city manager with Councilwoman Scott, this is kind of the one that we thought might be the most appropriate. I also visited with Chief Craig to find out where they had the most complaints of panhandling and where their officers were seeing, their patrol officers were seeing the most panhandling going on. And they had several locations, but the ones that had the most complaints and seemed to be the highest priority were Rio Grande and Laurent, Rio Grande and Navarro, Houston Highway and Ben Jordan, Navarro and 463, and John Stockbauer and Loop 463. So if this is something that council's interested in pursuing, these would be our recommended locations where we start with these signs to see how they do. And kind of maps that you can see, James has a map that we might be able to put up that will show kind of the locations of them. So there's the ones on, ones that, well, can you go back to the other one that you just had, James? It might be a little easier to view. Yeah, thank you. So those are the ones at John Stockbauer and Loop 463. If you can pan down, you can see the other locations there that I mentioned, which are mostly along the Houston Highway and Rio Grande corridor.
And ultimately, what would be helpful for staff is, you know, now that you've gotten a chance to see the sign and see some of the locations, is just getting some sort of informal consensus and just direction from council if you're in agreement with what we're proposing.
How much are the signs?
That's a great question.
We print them.
Yeah, we make them in-house.
We make those in-house. I don't have an exact cost on those, but it would be very minimal.
I have a question. Ms. Scott brought this up. She saw it somewhere in another state. Did it actually make a difference?
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I didn't look into it that far.
I think it serves a purpose of public education. And in fact, because I know people are watching this and for the benefit of public information, and it happens to be Giving Tuesday, you know, homelessness is caused by a lot of different reasons, and panhandlers are not necessarily homeless. It's not just a question of homelessness either. It's just a question of lower income or different situations. And I've always been an advocate that education is one of the best ways to not have the job of standing on the street corner. And I just wanted to mention that just within our community, we have the Adult Literacy Council, Gulf Bend Wellness Center, Salvation Army, and their Red Kettles are coming out right now, Christ Kitchen, we have any house of worship, whether it's a church, a temple, a mosque, Perpetual Help Home, the Billy Catan Recovery Center, Victoria Christian Assistance Ministry, Midcoast Family Services, the Homeless Coalition, Restoration Ministries, House of Palms, the Gabriel Project, Promise Point, Habitat for Humanity, Goodwill Industries. And I'd challenge anybody that wants to put some money in a panhandler's hand to double it and give it to one of those organizations or one of their choice. And that's a lot of why I think that those signs would be a good thing for our city to put up.
In addition to those signs, and at one point, way back when I kind of met with the sheriff when we were dealing with another issue, he mentioned to me that, you know, he would be interested in teaming with our police department in an effort to do something about panhandlers. Because if a panhandler steps off of the curb into the street, they're in violation of state law. And so they could be cited for it. So maybe in addition to signage, we could maybe pursue that route and at least have the discussion with them if indeed that is the case.
And I think it might be prudent to allow the police chief to address that specific topic, because that was something that the police chief and I discussed after you brought it up to my attention a few months ago.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Just to kind of give you a little bit of background as to, you know, from a policing or enforcement standpoint, to answer your question, Mayor, yes, we have actually engaged in two separate, we call them community policing efforts, where Phase One of those efforts were to go to locations, much, many of the ones you've seen this evening. But the first phase of it would be a public awareness and education campaign where we would actually make contact with individuals that were panhandling and give them a pamphlet that had a lot of the information concerning some of the social services that Councilmember Scott had brought up, but also, you know, make them aware of the current laws that they could be in violation of should they enter the roadway. And the second part of that operation would be an enforcement component. So we actually have had two separate incidents within the past year where we've done that.
Well, that sounds like a good approach to me, quite frankly, that, you know, you do try to educate, but at some point, sometimes you have to take that next step. And it sounds like y'all are willing to do that if it becomes necessary.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you. Any further direction for the staff?
Yes, the staff's just looking to know if we're okay with them pursuing, putting these signs up.
I'm certainly in a favor. I appreciate you bringing this up. I think the sign says it all, and I applaud you for recognizing the local charities that could use the help.
Thank you.
You know what? If they don't work, you can always take them down.
That's right. That's true.
But it's worth a try, so, anyway.
Yeah, I'd like to see us try it with the corrugated plastic. If they are effective, can we look at something more permanent? Aluminum with reflective?
The, I'm sorry, what you see there is just a mock-up, so you can see what the actual size and what the sign looks like. What we put up will be the actual sign, the metal sign.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's my question. Whereabout are you going to put them at? Right at the intersection? And are you going to have, like, signs going both ways?
We will, sure. So the plan is to put them in the most visible location that we can, as close to the intersection as possible. Some of those intersections will have existing poles that we can put them on, others won't. And rather than add additional poles that are going to obstruct view even further, what we'll do is put them, mount them onto the traffic signal bases. And so I feel that we'll be able to, every intersection, we'll be able to put them where they need to be, that they can be easily viewed.
Okay.
Give it to me. Is that enough direction?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to other items from coun, does anyone else have any items from council? Because if not, I would like to, oh, go ahead.
I have one other item that I'm totally not prepared for, but I've received a message that, and there may be a gentleman here that wants to talk about it, if so, if you'll indicate, but somebody has emailed about wanting speed bumps in their neighborhood. I think it may be the same neighborhood that we had heard from before, but I'm not sure. And so I'm just kind of bringing that up, and if that gentleman is here, I know that Donald has some information.
But we can have them speak at Citizens Communication.
Exactly. But, yeah.
Okay. One thing, I think, we tried last meeting and it wasn't successful, but, John, this is it. This is the real deal. And I just want to say again, and I've said before, you've been here a long time, 32 years. And I'm glad and proud to say that I've known you all those 32 years and worked with you on many projects. And I can tell folks that this is a very unique individual, because sometimes these, things get complicated a little bit when you're dealing with the issues of development and everything. But John was always the voice of clarity in every one of these meetings, and he always brought solutions to the table, and not roadblocks, but solutions. And that is a very unique gift for someone to have. And John is the absolute consummate professional, and he should be commended for the job he's done for the City of Victoria for 32 years. And I'd like to say...
If I could have just a minute, I promise I won't talk as long as I did yesterday.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, I don't need that many.
And just be, wait for him to wave the...
Yeah, I'll listen for that alarm. I had several people come up to me after my speech at the reception yesterday and said, "That's the most I've ever heard you talk since I've known you." And I said, "Well, I've just been saving up." And so I had my chance to speak yesterday. But I just want to thank the council. Mayor, thank you for your comments. I really do appreciate it. And the entire council, this is a unique city council for me to finish my long career in Victoria with, with so many of you that I've known so many years, some of you as long as I've been here, a couple of former city employees from back in the day when we were in the basement of City Hall, and two former planning commission chairs, and just a council, new council member who's been to as many council meetings as I have in the last six years. And so, Dr. Young, you've been around for a good while as well, and all of you, I appreciate your support, and I appreciate the opportunities that I've had to spend three incredible decades plus in a community that's become home. And I'm not leaving. I'll be, I'll be working in a different capacity. I'll be around. But this is home, this is where my family is, and I'm not going anywhere. So, thank you very much, everyone, for your kind words, for those of you and those out here on my team that were able to make it yesterday. It was a very special, special time, and this is a bittersweet week. I'm excited, but man, I'm going to miss some folks. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, John. Okay, any other items from council? Now we'll move into Citizens Communication. Anyone here that wants to step forth and say anything to council is welcome to do so. I would ask that if you're here to speak to the item on the public hearing, if you'll reserve those comments to the time of the public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is William Blanchard. I live at 408 Tampa Drive here in Victoria, and I'm here to request appointment to the Sales Tax Development Corporation Board. My wife, Pat, and I have lived here in Victoria for 29 years, and for 28 of those years, I was the CEO for the Ditar Healthcare System. When I retired last year, I missed community service, that was one of the components of my job, and so I'd like to continue to provide support to this community. And when I retired, I was involved in a lot of activities at the state level. I was on the Texas Hospital Association Board. On the federal level, I was on the American Hospital Association Policy Board. And so I think those are qualifications for this position. Currently, I'm involved in Victoria through the Victoria Symphony Board, the Bach Festival Board, I'm the, on the committee, Finance Committee at Our Savior's Lutheran Church. And I'm currently serving as a member of the Victoria Economic Development Corporation Board, and I am a past chairman. And that kind of leads me to my reasons for wanting to be a part of the Sales Tax Corporation Board. As a VEDC board member and as past chairman, I've been very, very concerned about marketing Victoria and making sure that we can achieve everything we need to achieve, specifically relative to the quality of life. Even when I was at Ditar, I spent a lot of time doing community service. In fact, Mayor McCoy and I worked for 14 years building a performing arts center downtown, labor of love. But I think if I could be appointed to the Sales Tax Development Corporation Board, I might be able to use some of those organization skills and leadership skills and maybe help council, perhaps make that organization a little more effective. It's, and maybe trying to figure out how to wisely spend our taxpayers' dollars. I think that quality of life in Victoria has a lot of components. It has, infrastructure is certainly important, our roads, our sewers, our, you know, all of our water handling, those are all important things. But I'd like to see it look a little bit broader at all of various things we can do in Victoria to make it a better place to live. I, I don't know if I could, I don't, I don't like following John Kaminsky. I worked around him and with him for almost 30 years, and he's a tough act to follow. But I would like to do whatever I can for the City of Victoria.
Thank you very much. Any other citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move on into the... John, did you want to?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, I want to talk about Suddenlink, but I want to talk about Stedman.
Come on up.
I heard a lot of people laugh when I said Suddenlink. My name is Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me talk here. My name is John McNeil. I live at 117 Hollywood. I'm a practicing internal medicine physician in Victoria, and I've been here for 20 years. You know, I know that everybody's been talking about problems with our cable and phone deal going on, but I really felt compelled to come here. And I've never come here, and I think the only time I've been here is when I've asked for a variance, which I'll probably be doing again in the near future. But what I did want to tell you all is that, you know, this last, this last week, y'all know in the paper the stuff about my office. I mean, this was a nightmare, it really was, and I hate to say that I'm so dependent on a phone, that one thing like your phone being out could really wreak a lot of havoc. But it really did. I mean, for a week, we had, we had moved, my office got flooded. There are people in here, my patients, and they understand that, that our office got flooded, so Citizens Hospital was good enough to give us a temporary place over there. So we moved over there, but of course, we had to transfer our phone line, and we did. We just transferred the phone. We left the entire phone system itself in our building because it was able to be salvaged. And so we left it there. We just moved the phone service over. Well, about a week before we were going to move back, we called and said, "Hey, we're ready to move back." And they said, "Well, you can't move your number until the day," because you can't have the phone ring at the same, or the same number ring in two places. So you got to wait till that Friday when you move. And we said, "That's fine." So that was actually on the 15th, the week before we even moved. So we moved on the 15th, and we thought our phone would be moved back over. Well, we got there Monday, and we didn't have phone service, which was, I could understand. I mean, it was Friday, it was Friday afternoon when we moved. I said, "Well, they'll get it done." So we started calling, and we started calling, and we started calling. And to give you the short version of this thing, I mean, for a week, we didn't have any phone service at my office. And I know that sounds like, "Oh, I'm sorry you didn't have a phone." Well, you had a cellphone. Yeah, but people don't have my cellphone. Well, a lot of people do have my cellphone, actually. And I've got a lot of phone calls. I got phone calls from pharmacies, I got phone calls from patients. The bad thing is that, you know, when, when my patients call and they can't get their medicines, I mean, that's a problem. And I would like to think that everybody would, would call, you know, 30 days before their medicine runs out, but that's not the way it works. A lot of people call my office and they need their prescription, you know, like that day. And so there were a lot of people that ran out of their medications, there were people that couldn't get lab reports. And I don't want to get all dramatic on here, but, I mean, I had a young patient with leukemia that I couldn't even get their labs sent to me because they were somewhere in fax land because I didn't even have a fax machine that could get my information. You know, and something like that happening is bad enough, but the way that my staff and myself and my IT people were treated by Suddenlink was appalling. I mean, simply appalling. They hung up on us. I guess we called so many times, just basically pleading for our phone service to be cut back on. Just give us one line, give us anything, give us a line. And they had a lot of reasons. I'm not sure exactly what they meant, but the bottom line was that we had one line, which we had no fax lines, we had no way of getting information transmitted back and forth. We had one phone line that was basically tied up most of the time for the first two days of the week. And then on Wednesday, in an effort, I think, to do something, or I have no idea why, but they cut the phone off completely. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and half of Monday, when my patients called to get medicines, to get an appointment, to get advice, to get whatever you'd call your doctor for, they got a thing that said that my phone had been disconnected. So, you know, not the most confidence-inspiring response that you want to hear. So I don't know what can be done about this, but, I mean, the way I felt as a citizen, the way I felt was that, you know, I have no recourse. I have, I have nothing. I mean, I can call, I can beg, I can plead. One of my girls on one day was on the phone for 85 minutes, waiting for an answer and never got anything. The day before that, she was on the phone 52 minutes and waited and got nothing. We had them tell my IT person, "I'm going to go down and talk to the department right now, I'll call you right back." That happened two or three times, and we never got a phone call back. Finally, it got to the point where they said, "We're working on it." Well, when is it going to be? "We're working on it, we're working on it." And then they would hang up. And then it got to the point where we would call, they would find out it was us, and they would just hang up. So I just, I can't see how that's right. And, you know, it'd be one thing if it was my home phone and I just wanted to chit-chat with my buddies or something like that. But when you're, when you're trying to get to your doctor and trying to get medications refilled and trying to get your x-rays results, or trying to get your tests set up, or trying to find out if you can come in and be seen, or trying to find out if your doctor is even in town anymore because his phone's been disconnected, then it becomes a whole nother problem. And I hope that, you know, I'm not saying, you know, that, whatever, I'm just saying that I hope that there's another option for us, or something that we can do, or something that we can instill to someone to know that those actions had consequences, and it was not good for my patients, and thus, I don't think it was good for our community. So, that's all I got.
Thank you very much, John, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you for listening to me. I didn't go over five minutes, did I?
Yeah, but...
Oh, maybe I'm okay.
When we visit you now, we expect a few big strides too, John. Is there any else that wants to speak to council, to citizens' comments? If not, we'll move on to the next subject. I think Mr. Gooch has a small presentation before we go into the public hearing.
I do. I'll read the caption from here, and then I'll step down while he changes to the PowerPoint. This is an ordinance granting to Victoria Electric Cooperative Incorporated the right privilege and franchise to utilize the City of Victoria's public right-of-way for broadband internet service facilities, to provide such services, providing for the payment for a fee or a charge for the use of the public right-of-way, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is the first reading. He got that PowerPoint put up much quicker than I walked over here. I apologize for that. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the franchise agreement that we are proposing with Victoria Electric Cooperative. They are seeking to provide broadband services in addition to the electricity services that they already provide in parts of the city. I want to remind, there we go, I want to remind council members, what we've been talking about already, about franchise agreements, that this is an agreement for the use of the city right-of-way. And so the purpose of this agreement is to allow VEC to construct and operate facilities for broadband internet services within the city rights-of-way, that is, streets and sidewalks throughout the city. The agreement is a non-exclusive agreement, that is, it doesn't prohibit anyone else from offering the same services and also putting facilities in our right-of-way, and it is limited to 10 years. I'll go into a little, few more details about what the agreement sets out. But the base to remember tonight is that what we're talking about is an agreement for the use of right-of-way. Some people would like to think of this as an agreement to provide broadband, but we are not entering into a contract to ask VEC to provide broadband services. And it's important to remember that, because when I talk about on the next slide, the types of regulations that are related to this agreement, you'll see that they are all tied to the use of the real estate. They are not related to the business practice of the company. So let me show you some of the things that are included in the contract. Under the contract, VEC must install and maintain their facilities in compliance with laws, including city code, including state law, including national regulations. They have to, when installing facilities, minimize interference with existing city structures or other users of that right-of-way. And so when they go to hang their cables, for example, they have to hang them at the appropriate height so that traffic can travel underneath them. One thing that we are adding to our franchise agreements as we get new agreements is that we are requiring them to submit GIS maps of their broadband facilities so that we can add a layer into the city's GIS system and know where their facilities are located. They are required to relocate their facilities, if we need them to, at their own expense. And so if the city is widening a street, moving a sidewalk, and that pole needs to be relocated, and the pole has their facilities on it, they have to pay to relocate their facilities. And finally, they have to, of course, maintain appropriate insurance and indemnify the city for any damages that they may cause to the city or to third parties as a result of their facilities. So all of those types of requirements, I'm pointing out again, are the kinds of things that you see in a real estate lease, a real estate agreement, because that's what this broadband franchise agreement is really all about. In addition to that, they're paying the city a franchise fee. They are paying for their use of the real estate. And so the rate that they have agreed to pay is the rate that is established for, this is a technical term, city-preferred access lines for certificated telecommunications providers. In layman's terms, that's the same rate that AT&amp;T and other telephone providers pay whenever they run lines through city property. They pay the city a rate based on the number of connections that those lines provide. They pay the city a rate based on the number of connections that those lines provide. In the city of Victoria, that rate is eighty-six cents per month for residential connections and two dollars and ninety-six cents, excuse me, two dollars and ninety cents per month for commercial connections. That is the same rate that, um, VEC is prepared to pay for this franchise agreement, essentially putting them on equal footing with AT&amp;T's DSL service, if you wanna think about it that way. Based on some numbers that they have projected for their rollout, the city might see annual payments between six thousand five hundred dollars and twenty-two thousand dollars, depending on the mix of connections between residential and commercial connections. And so you're really just looking at, um, and I, I will say, I think those numbers are a bit speculative, and I don't want council to rely on those numbers in deciding on this franchise agreement because they are, of course, prospectively looking forward to how many customers they think they will be able to get. Um, and in all honesty, the number might be zero in the first year. We have no way of knowing that they will have a certain number of connections. So I wanna be transparent about that fact. It is based on the number of connections. Because this is the first franchise fee, new franchise ordinance that we've had in several years, I wanted to go over with you the charter requirements. Each of these requirements comes from the city charter, which is, of course, approved by the voters of the city, and we don't have the power to change without going back to the voters. And so we have a very specific adoption process. We're adopting an ordinance that has a term of less than fifteen years. As I said before, this one is for only ten. The ordinance must be read at three separate meetings. Mr. Lofgren will be happy about that. Um, the, we're reading it for the first time tonight on December third. We will read it the second time, assuming that it passes, on December seventeenth, and the third time on January seventh. So assuming that this ordinance passes each time, it will be read three times. Within seven days after each vote, it will be printed in full in the newspaper. That cost will be paid for by VEC. We're not allowed to approve the ordinance finally until at least thirty days after the first reading, so the calendar works out perfectly. January seventh is more than thirty days from today. And the effective date of the ordinance cannot be until at least sixty days after the final approval. So assuming that we meet the calendar that I've just laid out, the ordinance could be effective on March seventh. No earlier than March seventh. So that's the ordinance, um, that you have in front of you. I will take any questions that you may have. In addition to that, after any questions that I might be able to answer for you, um, VEC has sent several representatives here today, including Nina Campos, who is the manager of HR and Communications for VEC, as well as, uh, their program manager for Infineum Services, the cable, uh, excuse me, the internet broadband division of their company. And so if you have any questions, they would be willing to answer those as well. So are there any questions for me before I ask Ms. Campos to come up?
If you, if you don't mind, and I know you've explained this before, but for the benefit, explain that why we don't have a franchise with the city for Suddenlink, but we can issue a franchise for VEC.
Thank you. It's a good reminder. Suddenlink is primarily a cable TV provider, at least in the eyes of the State Public Utility Commission. They have been issued a certificate called a SICFA from the State Public Utility Commission that allows them to run their cable TV lines through the city right-of-way without asking us for permission. They do pay a franchise fee. They pay it to the state, and the state remits it back to us. Um, and so they, we are being compensated for their use of our right-of-way. But so long as they provide internet services through that same wire, we don't have the ability to ask them for another franchise agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
The franchise fees that Suddenlink pays that we receive, are they comparable to what?
It is, it is not calculated in the same way, and I'm not sure how the dollar figure itself would compare. But Suddenlink's franchise fee is, I believe, four percent or maybe five percent of gross revenue plus an additional amount to help pay for the VTV cables, uh, television service government channel that we have. So they, they pay a significant amount of revenue to the city. All right. Ms. Campos, would you like to come up and?
I'm a little shorter. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about Infineum Broadband, the newest division of Victoria Electric Cooperative.
Speeds?
So our speeds start at ten megabits per second and go up to one gig, depending on the service that the customer would, um, opt into. We do offer wireless as well as fiber to the home, so it would depend on which service they felt they needed and which package they decided to purchase.
And are you able to share your anticipated rollout?
So we have been authorized to start the feasibility study for the Victoria area. Um, right now, we are serving Bloomington, Palacios, and Port O'Connor. Um, but unfortunately, we can't get a timeline until we've completed that feasibility study for the Victoria area.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the timeline for the feasibility study?
Uh, the feasibility study would take a few months, but I don't have an exact timeline on that. However, I would be happy to bring that information back to you at the next meeting, if that would be okay.
Further questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more item before you open the public comment on this, since this is a first, uh, here, a first reading. We will have a public hearing on this. Uh, one of the questions that I was asked outside of this meeting, and I meant to address in my presentation, this franchise agreement does cover the entirety of the city of Victoria, not just the geographic area where they are currently offering electricity services. And so it is possible that through that rollout process, they, they, they will have the legal authority to, uh, cover the entire city. Okay?
Thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
I think that's important. Okay. If there are any further, I will now open a public hearing to this matter. Anyone in the public that wants to step forward and speak to this matter, please do so now. Seeing that, I will close the public hearing.
I move to accept item C1.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept item C1. Any further discussion? Been done, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, there are two items on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved by a single vote. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November nineteenth, twenty nineteen. And second, an ordinance amending section two dash twenty-four of the Victoria City Code to clarify that City Council has adopted Roberts Rules of Order as its parliamentary procedure, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to accept item D1 and D2.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the items on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the agreement with A.J. Shredding in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars for mowing Loop 463 right-of-way and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion to second on item E1. Any, we have a...
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, just briefly.
Just briefly, I have a, I have a map posted, but essentially, um, this is the final year of, uh, possible three years that we have with A.J. Shredding to mow from, uh, essentially Main Street to Salem Road. That's mo, uh, they mow both sides. It's about ninety-four acres. Four times a year.
Let me ask you a, a question. I know you know the answer. Why does the city mow this right-of-way?
We mow the right-of-way, uh, on odd months when it does not get mowed by our contractor and takes out only mows a couple of times a year, uh, as they see needed and when we don't have wildflowers in the way that they would mow down.
They used to mow, the state used to mow more often.
The state did use to mow more often. Yes, sir. And it's something we've, you and, I know you and I've talked about for possibly the next session.
I think, just really briefly, if you don't mind, minute or two, this is a good opportunity just to talk about, um, how you've taken over right-of-way and some of the major improvements that have happened with the community appearance as it relates to mowing and some of the efficiencies that you've come across.
Yes, sir. August first, um, I acquired the right-of-way mowing in the right-of-way spring for the city. Does this seem really loud to y'all? It's just me?
You just really literally don't need those.
But we, we did acquire the right-of-way mowing August first. Um, we also started kind of a, uh, community appearance department. So we took that right-of-way mowing and kinda created a different subdivision of the Environmental Services Department. And so what we're doing is, not only are we doing the right-of-way, the flood buyout lots, but we've also started doing where, where if I'm driving through town or someone drives through town and we see something, instead of going through a process and picking, and, and waiting to pick it up, we clean it up. Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me. Jesus, I know, uh, we talked about it, but, uh, we've picked up eighty, over eighty-seven, and I wanna say it was almost three hundred, uh, I'm sorry, not three hundred, probably about three tons of stuff that was out at the street. And now this is, if I'm driving down Houston Highway and I see a pallet, which did actually happen, just laying on the side up against the curb, we pick it up right then and there. We're not gonna leave it. We're not gonna go to another department. We just take care of it. Um, if we're driving through and there's a piece of property that's just looks horrible, I mean, it can take time to clean some of those up, especially if it's on a main thoroughfare or a thruway through the city, we take care of it. Um, we clean up the mall ditch, um, but we've gone out across from McCoy's, across from Lowe's, across from other stores in town and done cleanups because we've driven by them, and they just look bad with litter. And so I have kind of what we call our, our, you know, uh, A-team or whatever you wanna call it, that we send out and we just, we need to go get that done. We need to get it done now. It looks horrible. Um, and we're tracking all this because at some point, you know, when we're doing our budget, we need to make sure that we get that covered.
Well, I commend the effort, uh, wholeheartedly, because this is almost like advertising dollars for our community. Because if we don't look, if we don't appear appealing, then how can we expect someone to come and wanna live here or, or spend time here? So I commend your staff and yourself for starting that effort.
I'm sorry, Mayor. We're revitalizing, um, or recreating, I would like to say, Keep Victoria Beautiful. We had our first meeting last month. Um, we're working on putting our board together. I've been working with, uh, Thomas and, and with, uh, Finance on getting our 501(c)(3) and all that set up. And so you're gonna see that come back, and we're gonna be stronger than what we used to be, and we're gonna be doing some really good things. So keep your eyes out for that in the next year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I think we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion of council on this? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Texas Land Management doing businesses in Gardenville to add ninety days to the current contract and declaring an effective date.
I move to approve item E2.
Second.
A motion and a second for item E2. Any more comment on this one?
No, sir. We're very close to having this tied up. Uh, I did bid it twice, but it made a big difference in price. Um, it's, we're just trying to get the best overall deal for the city.
Good deal. Any other comment from council? Ain't none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the agreement with A.J. Shredding in the amount of fifty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for mowing seven city parks and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion to second. Any comment from staff?
I just have a short presentation, if you'd like me to go over it. If y'all have any questions, I can answer those as well.
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Do you mind pulling up the PowerPoint? Okay. How do I use this? There we go. Okay. So this is just simply a request renewal to, um, the A.J. Shredding services that we have for the seven parks in the city. Um, and this will be the first renewal. Uh, this is a contract that we started back in twenty seventeen. And, um, right now, it helps us keep with the ten-to-twelve day mowing cycle, um, which is our goal for all of the areas that we mow. And, uh, right now, roughly, total sixteen parks is nine hundred and eighty acres. But for the seven parks, it's a lot less, but it does help us out tremendously when we try to keep within that ten-to-twelve day mowing cycle. Um...
Before we transition to that ten-to-twelve day mowing cycle, what realistically, what, how often was it realistically happening before? I think it's important that everybody get a sense of some of this improvement.
Prior to this improvement, we were, we were hitting twelve to fifteen days, depending on weather. Um, but normally, in that, that fourteen-day range, sometimes we'd get to twelve, but most of the time, around fourteen is our average for the last couple of years.
And believe it or not, a few days makes a big difference.
Most definitely. Thirty percent, I guess.
All right. Ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, when we got here to this point, let's see here. There we go. Um, right after the hurricane, uh, we struggled a little bit with hiring employees, so we had three vacant spots. And, um, we saw this as an opportunity to potentially pilot a program by contracting out these seven parks, which are our neighborhood parks. They are smaller parks. And, um, it took, uh, was it the three full-time positions? Just the two full-time positions to fund this project, and, uh, it worked out very well for us. It sped us up and made us more efficient, and, um, that's why we would like for y'all to reconsider or ask, we're asking for the renewal for this, uh, shredding service. Oh.
Further?
That's all I have. Do y'all have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Any other discussion of, from council?
I just have one question, Danielle. Uh, we have sixteen parks, and we're contracting out seven. So does the city do the, the others? We do the others? Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion from council? Now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
So next, next up, we have a city, yeah, city manager's report. And so first April, we'll provide an update, and then we'll have Thomas.
Yeah. Okay, council, I just have a brief update on some appointments that we need to do. All seven members of the, uh, Building and Standards Commission, their appointments are expiring in January of twenty twenty. So, um, the purpose of the commission is to hold, um, public hearings as requested by the Director of Development Services to hear and determine cases for substandard and unsafe buildings. The commission then determines, um, if the building is unsafe, um, it, then it, they can proceed to determine whether the building should be vacated, repaired, secured, demolished, or, and/or the occupants relocated. And members of the commission serve two-year terms, so the new terms would be through January first of twenty twenty-two. And like I said previously, the commission does have seven members. So the current members are Frank Reyes...
Why is the question, why, why are their terms not staggered?
I believe when it, when the, when the board was first created, they were, were never staggered. I'm not certain of why. Do you know, Julie? It was just when it was created, from what I understand. That was just not staggered in the creation. And the current members are Frank Reyes, Robert Brooks, Eric Mercer, Craig Lager, Sherri Strickland, Victor Marshall, and Dean Raper. Uh, all members do wish to be reappointed except for Mr. Mercer. Um, and currently, we have one new application that's been received for appointment. So on December seventeenth, a resolution will be brought before the council, uh, for y'all to vote to, who to, who to reappoint or appoint to those positions. And applications for appointment are available from the city secretary's office or at the city's website. Applications are received year-round, and we submit those to y'all whenever we have appointments that are necessary. So do y'all have any additional questions?
I'd like to make a comment. That is a unique board. I served on that board for many, many, I can't even remember how many years, and I chaired it for many, many years. And it takes a special person to, uh, serve on that board because some of the issues that come before it are gut-wrenching. I mean, it really is, the things that you have to do. And you'd think it'd be easy to do and make those decisions, but, uh, it's not. And, uh, I mean, we, we face, we think we face tough, tough issues. I would argue that on a, on a meeting-per-meeting basis, there are issues that come before that group that, uh, that, uh, we would, we don't face as a council. So I commend everyone that volunteers to serve on that board.
And I don't wanna lose any of them, um, but, you know, the fact that it's not staggered leaves us the potential that all seven of them could say, I've had enough of this. I don't wanna be reappointed. Um, should we put some thought into, um, create, I guess, what we would create some of them and reappoint them for one year and this first time, and then this time next year, we could put them on a two-year term? Is that, I don't know that, how you create stagger...
We, we can certainly put some options together if what council would like to see is, is an option that staggers terms. We can absolutely do that.
I just brought it up. I think it's... I just brought it up. I think it's a good idea, but what do the rest of you think?
Well, it's it's not a board that meets terribly often.
They meet like every quarter.
Just as needed.
Sometimes it's, there's nothing there.
So if it's not a problem, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. We do have a quarterly schedule and as needed is more based on funding rather than the need to actually take buildings to the board.
But it too is very important in in making our city more appealing visually. Any other questions for?
Believe it or not, sis.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, if you don't mind, Thomas, I'll just kind of just kick it off. But early on in in my arrival, Thomas and I had really good conversations about how to enhance the agenda development process. Thomas had really good ideas that he had already, him and his staff had already explored. And so really, him and his staff deserve a lot of the credit on where we're headed with some of this, as well as OC, who's now retired. He was at the initial stages of looking at some of these improvements that will be talked about today. But ultimately, all of what will be presented today is is is, the goal is to make the process easier for staff. Of course, as council, you don't get, and the public, you don't get exposed to the process that staff undertakes to put the agenda together. But it's a labor of love. Somebody mentioned labor of love earlier. And so we want to work smarter, not harder. So we want to find ways to make that process more efficient while at the same time making it more user-friendly to not only you as the elected officials, but the public. And so with that, I'll kind of toss it over to Thomas to kind of spear his conversation.
I appreciate those kind words. This is something that has been a long time coming out and this is an exciting day for me and my staff as well. I'm standing here today, though, not representing just my office, but a committee across city departments who came together to examine the options available to try to improve the process of preparing meeting agendas for council's consideration. It is, it takes a long time. I previously told you, it's a two to three week process putting together those packets that you get each meeting. And we have streamlined that quite a bit this year, but there was a lot of room for further improvement. And I've briefly mentioned it to some of you. You've heard the word iCompass before. And today I'm rolling that project out to you for you to see. The committee that met to review all of this included members of not only my department, the legal department, and the city secretary, but each department that has a board or commission that could potentially use this software to roll out their agendas as well. We intend for this to be a citywide project, not just a city council project. And so we had the Development Services Department, the Building and Standards Commission is, and the Planning Commission, both are under their review. The library, which has the library advisory board, the Parks Department, which has a Parks Commission, and the Information Technology Department also helped us out quite a bit with technical support. The purpose of this agenda was really, as was said in my office earlier today, to move the city from the Flintstones to the Jetsons. This is one of those situations where we have been preparing the agenda essentially the same way, probably since the eighties or nineties. And we are now prepared to move into a modern presentation system that is going to make the agenda more easy, more easy, easier to access, easier to use, and easier to navigate. So our goals in preparing this were that we would look for a system that would allow for consistent preparation of those agendas from department to department, meeting to meeting. Consistent formatting so that citizens and members of those boards would be able to consistently navigate those agendas with ease. And a consistent location so that all of those agendas will now be consolidated into a single location on the city's website, where citizens will be able to find not only the agenda, but the packet of supporting materials, the minutes for those meetings, as well as the video for those meetings, which will all be integrated, cross-linked, and as you'll hear later tonight, even timestamped in some cases, to make it easier for the public to find out what city council has been up to lately. Our two guiding principles were ease of public use and ease of navigation in the electronic packet. And I really want to highlight that last item. Some of you were on council the last time that we attempted to roll out electronic packets, and you know that that did not go well. It was a difficult system to use. We handed everyone an iPad and had you download a PDF document, and that simply was not as easy to use as a pen and paper. And so many people simply reverted back to the old way of doing things. And so we have fallen back into our old habits. The new system will be easier to navigate and I think much more useful for you. Prior to today, the committee has been reviewing various commercial options. We investigated twelve different alternative products. We had presentations from four of those products to talk about how they could work for the city. And the committee selected the product called iCompass from Diligent Software. That contract was executed at the end of August and Diligent was very good to us. They gave us thirteen months for the price of twelve, which allowed us to fund this project with surplus money from the 2019 budget and roll this project all the way through the 2020 budget without needing additional funding. Remember, by August, the budget for 2020 had already been approved. We would have needed a budget amendment if they weren't willing to do that with us, so we're very happy with that. The next time that you'll see this come up will be in the 2021 fiscal budget. The design and implementation of the backend has taken up the better part of the last several months. Katie Connolly in my office and April Hilbrook, the city secretary, have been working to design the system that you probably will never see for all of the internal approvals, routing, and documents that have to be assembled in order for this to get to you in a streamlined fashion. Today, we're rolling out sort of an informational overview. And in the very near future, you're going to be receiving direct training. Kate Garcia in the city manager's office will be scheduling a thirty-minute session for you to come to my office and meet with Katie Connolly, where she will go over how you will use this system going forward. And it's important that you get that done early this month, during December. We're going to have a soft launch for the December seventeenth meeting. What that means is all of the directors who are sitting out here are going to actually do double work. They're going to prepare the packet the same way that they have historically prepared the packet for you, and you will receive the same traditional packet. But we are also going to, in the background, prepare the packet in the new method. It will be still behind a closed wall. It won't be available to the public yet, but it's our trial run to make sure everything works smoothly. You will have access to view it at that time and have an opportunity to practice reviewing it online electronically as well. The hard launch, where it will be the only method that we're using, is the January seventh meeting. So for January seventh, starting the new year, we're the Jetsons. We're moving into the new age. During the first quarter of 2020, we will be looking at further implementation. We will be rolling out a lot of other functionality. You'll hear about some of that tonight. The minutes module, the video integration will all be rolled out during the first quarter of 2020. Additionally, we will be working on rolling this out to each of those other boards and commissions during the first quarter of 2020. So we are not at the finish line yet. We are only halfway through a marathon. I'm going to ask James to switch us over and I'm going to actually show you what this thing looks like. And before you get deeply invested in this, let me say that this is a mock-up of what the page will look like. This is designed to allow me to show you the functionality of the website, where it will ultimately be displayed on the website, what it will ultimately look like, our decisions that have yet to be made. Grab my mouse here and make sure I can drive this correctly. All right? So down the right-hand side of the page, you see over here where my mouse is, there's a calendar of events and you see that certain dates are dark or gray where meetings are currently scheduled. There's a today's meeting box that where a citizen could simply click there and jump straight to today's meeting if they want to know what we're doing. Below that is a long list of upcoming meetings. We will probably pare that list down. That includes all the meetings for next year, I think, all the way out to October twentieth. Then there's a list of recent meetings if they want to go back and see what we've done historically.
And ultimately, that will show, you know, Parks Advisory Meetings, Library Meetings. So people will be able to see all the public meetings that are taking place, not just the council meetings.
Yes, sir. That list will include all of the meetings that are currently scheduled. We populated that list so you could see things on that list, but we did not yet get to the other things. Across the middle here, you see the home button that'll take you where we are. A calendar function that will allow you to look out into the future at specific dates to see where those meetings are. And again, this will be populated with not just city council meetings, but all of the other boards and commissions in one location. Going back to the row of buttons that we have here, I'm going to skip over meetings and I'll come back to that in just a second. There's also a search button. Using the search functionality on the website, if someone were to type in Building and Standards Commission, they would not only get the access to the schedule of agenda for that meeting, but they will also pull up the report that you received tonight at the city council meeting because it's word context searchable. And so they would be able to see all of the information contained in this system related to the Building and Standards Commission. And so it's a very powerful search function. I think it's going to make life very easy, save for the newspaper, who's often looking for documents that we've had in our meetings. So let me click on the magic button here, the meetings button, where all of the meetings will be listed again. Remember, this is just a mock-up, but it is functionally laid out essentially how it's going to be. You will have on this page, you see the gray box for the city council meeting and also a blank box just to show you that other meetings will be populated here as we go along. Within the city council meeting section here, each of those links will take you to one of the meetings. I'm going to choose one that we have populated as a sample. This is the agenda for the November fifth meeting of city council. It is the meeting that we previously had. We went ahead and populated it through the new system so that you can see how things will roll out. And as you see down here at the bottom, there is a PDF of that document. You could simply click one of these links to print either the packet or the entire packet of supporting materials as well. This box here says agenda and it is merely a placeholder right now. As we continue to roll out functionality, there will be another button here for minutes, another button here for videos. And you'll see some examples of that later as we go through this process of of rolling out. But for right now, the agenda is the first item that we've gotten to. It's the only thing that is active at the moment. I think most of you will spend most of your time reviewing the packet in this mode here, what is called the split screen mode, where on the left hand you will see the agenda listed, where you can scroll through and look at each item on the agenda. And then there are hyperlinks that will allow you to dive directly into that agenda to see the documents that were prepared to support this item on the agenda. So there's what we will be calling the Agenda Item Report. That's the background information to help you understand what this is about. There's also a link here to the ordinance itself so that you can jump directly from document to document and easily find your way back to the agenda that will stay here on the left-hand side. That split screen navigation to me is one of the greatest functionalities of this system because it allows you to really navigate this in real time. You will have the ability to have this split screen navigation on your screen in front of you there during the meetings. So if you choose to navigate directly in the electronic system, you'll be able to have it in front of you. Likewise, you'll be able to address this webpage, because it is simply a webpage, from any other web accessible device. So you could be doing this on your cell phone if you happen to be away from the office. You can be doing it on an iPad. You could be doing it on an Android device. It is device agnostic. It doesn't care how you're accessing it because it's simply a webpage. So you'll be able to access it here in the meeting as well as at home or at the office, pretty much with equal ease. So I'm very excited about this process, but as I've said, what we're showing you today, James, you can go back to the PowerPoint, is not the only functionality that I want to to lay out. There's a lot to come. And so April is going to come up, if I can advance this, great. April's going to come up and speak to you for a few minutes about the city council minutes and how those will integrate and some some good things to look forward to there. And then Ms. Strevel will come forward and she will talk about the video integration module and the things that she's currently doing with live streaming, and there are some very exciting things going on there as well. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Hilbrook, the city secretary.
Hello again. So we're going to have some changes to the minutes when using this new iCompass system. So I wanted to kind of briefly go over those with you guys. Minutes are defined as the official record of the proceeding of a meeting. And the objective of minutes is to preserve an accurate account of business transacted at a meeting. The basic principle of writing minutes is that minutes should record what was done, not what was said. And back in nineteen ninety-six, the council then passed a resolution to change the city council minute format to generally eliminate records of discussion in accordance with Robert Scholz's order. And the minutes from that meeting stated that the that minutes from then on would reflect specific actions taken and the general policy direction of the council. Now, in researching this, it was never really implemented, not into its full capacity. If I look at the minutes from before that July meeting in ninety-six, they look identical to the minutes from December of ninety-six. They never really seem to. They may have shortened some some minor things, but they didn't simply go down to action minutes, which is what this iCompass system can do for us, where we'll record the actions rather than all the discussions. And if we do pare that down, currently I don't record everything that you guys say. I try to condense it all, but it'll go down even farther to record those actions only. So reports will now no longer not include the content of the report, but rather a statement of the subject, who presented the report, and if council comes to a consensus as a result of that report, the consensus will be documented as it is a direction to staff. Citizens' comments will have less detail, but still list the concern of the citizens. So I wanted to give you guys an example of another city that's currently already using this system. The city of Murphy. So you'll see that the website is very similar to the one that Thomas showed you earlier. Let's see. I'm going to go into this July eighteenth meeting, and you have copies of the minutes from the July eighteenth meeting on your desk as well. The one thing I wanted to show you is that this agenda button, and Thomas mentioned these buttons before. Ours just, the mock-up only had the agenda, but this one has the minutes as well, and it could also have video there. But the, if you look at their agenda and see how it's numbered and lettered, when you look at the minutes, it's numbered and lettered the exact same way. So it's very easy to compare. You'll see different items on the on the meeting and how they record them. Of course, we'll have our, we're still working through all the details of this with iCompass, the software and our instrumentation, our implementation provider, Elena. She's still working with us to decide exactly how our minutes are going to look. But this kind of gives you an idea of their, they've gone, I talked with the city secretary, they've gone to action minutes too and pared theirs down quite a bit. So if you look like at presentations, like B, for example, just says that a financial report for the month ending May thirty-first was done, and it simply lists that their controller gave the presentation. So I would no longer include all the details. If Gilbert gives you a presentation about our finances, it wouldn't include the details on maybe the numbers that he that he gives out or anything like it's simply going to say that he gave a report and what the report was, the subject matter of the report. So there's different things like that that are going to change through our minutes, so you'll see that they'll be shorter in general. So. I'm ready to go back to the PowerPoint. So as I mentioned, the details are still being worked out with our software provider. And the minutes portion may not be rolled out at the hard launch on the January meeting simply because we're still learning about the process. They they position it and they section it out, so they want to do certain things at certain times. So we're learning about the agenda process and putting all that together first, and then we will, then we'll move on to the minutes and then we'll move on to putting everything out there for all the different boards and commissions. So it will be within the first quarter that we start the minutes. I'm hoping to have them done on January first, but we are still receiving training on that portion.
Just really quickly on the minutes too, you know, a big part of of the benefit of the minutes features is not necessarily this piece, but it's the ability to have the minutes in a centralized location
Yes.
so that they're easier to find. But also eventually we want to grow into having minutes posted on there for even the planning commission and all the others. Because currently, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but currently we do not put minutes
Not for every.
on our website for every board and commission that we have. Not everyone.
Yeah, not everyone. Some of them do, but not everyone.
And so, and if they are, recall they're in different places.
Yes.
Right? And so just the centralizing of all this information is is one of the biggest, I guess, advantages
Exactly.
of the system as it relates to minutes.
Yeah, and I don't know if you guys noticed on the city of Murphy, but they did have different, as Mr. Garza mentioned earlier, different committee meetings, all on that same list. So you could go and pick the Parks Commission, or you could pick your Planning Commission and just go right there. It's all in one location. The ordinances and resolutions, even after they're finished and signed by the mayor and myself, they will be re-uploaded into that packet, so you will see the finished product. If you go back to that packet afterwards, you will see the one that's completely signed. So if there was maybe a motion made on the floor to change it, we would have to do that and re-upload it. So.
Want to add something, Thomas?
Yes, I do. Just as a transition from from her presentation to what Ms. Strevel is about to do. Change often brings people to have questions and concerns. And one of the questions or concerns that you might be feeling right now is, how are people going to find out what we talked about during the meetings? Where are they going to find that level of detail that used to be in our minutes? Today, the best record of what was said during this meeting is the video. Today, the best record of what was said during this meeting is the video of this meeting. And because the new system is going to integrate so tightly with what we're doing, it's going to be much easier for citizens to jump directly to the video of that meeting. And so with that, I want to transition to what Ms. Striebel has to talk about, a product called Swagit.
Well, maybe this is what she's about to answer, but when you say transition to the video, is it the whole video, or if they're looking at an Agenda item, will it take it bookmarked to that discussion?
So we're actually going to do a live demo, so I will be answering that exact same question in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that perfect transition, Thomas. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Garza. I'll be presenting on the live streaming video portion of the iCompass integration aspect. This is going to be found at VTV15.live, and it is currently active and available to the public. We've been streaming and recording videos since October 1st, I believe. But first, before I go into the actual live demo, I want to emphasize the importance of accessibility and providing the important information that's relayed in these meetings to everyone. We encourage everyone to attend these meetings in person for many different reasons, one being participating in citizens' communications and having the ability to speak to topics you're concerned about, passionate about. We do encourage that, but we also realize and recognize that many people may have work constraints, travel constraints, conflicting work schedules, and we want to honor that. We want to be able to provide that same information to those people who are here and those who are not. Thomas also alluded to the digital landscape that's continuously evolving, and we want to stay up with the times as well. And nowadays, most information is available at your fingertips. For example, I'm actually live streaming our video here on my iPhone. So all you had to do was search VTV15.live, and there you go. So with that, we understand the importance of the live streaming and the video portion. Before I go into the live demo, I want to mention that we partnered with Swagit Productions. I believe this is probably what OC might have mentioned, or maybe James, in the budget session, but it is a communications, third-party communication service provider who is not only live streaming our meetings for us, but also archiving them. And so the reason we chose them was because they would be able to integrate with the iCompass Agenda software that Thomas and April are presenting about. So with that, I will go into, there you go, the live demo. One thing I wanted to mention was, we don't currently have it fully integrated. As you know, there's a lot of moving parts. And so the first example I wanted to show is the city of Bel Air. So if you scroll down, you'll see this is essentially what it would look like when it is fully integrated. If you see here, there's the Agenda option, here's the missing video link that wasn't in the previous example, but would be in ours. So once you click through to what is going to be ours in the future, it will bring you to that VTV15.live, which is redirected to this URL as well, web-landing page. So if you scroll down, click on the dropdown menu, watch live. Let's make sure that volume is turned down. Hit play, and you can watch it live. There is a little bit of a lag, so you might hear that. And if you want to expand it, you just hit the upper-right corner, and you can watch it fullscreen. You can go back by hitting escape on your keyboard or minimizing back to the small window pane. So that's watching it live. It's extremely convenient for people who maybe weren't able to attend but would still like to tune in. Maybe they're out of town for a work conference, whatever it may be. So if you scroll down, the archived version has a little bit more of those added features I kind of want to focus on. Okay, looks like we're going to search for street paving. So if you hit search, it'll pull up right here. Based on the archive videos that we have, it'll pull from that specific meeting, and once you click through, even that specific part of the meeting, it'll pull it up automatically for you. So if you hit play, turn that down.
That takes us to item E5, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the structure of management services LLC.
That it takes you directly to that spot.
In the amount of $87,977 and declaring an effect.
Perfect. So you go back, and let's say you just want to reference the library of all the archive videos. Click on City Council for the purpose of this meeting, and this is a video option where it takes you directly to that same window pane we just saw here. City Council also will take you to that exact same window pane. If you click on Agenda, that will only take you to the PDF of the Agenda Minutes. So we're going to click on City Council. This is the latest archived version. Archived meaning it's no longer live, it's, the meeting has concluded, and it's now filed away for future use, just like you would save a Word document and put it in a folder to access it for later use. It's the same concept here. So click on City Council, and this actually is, again, an archived, it's not live. So it'll start from the very top of the meeting, naturally. But what's convenient about this portion is in the right window pane, you'll see the Agenda in tandem with simultaneously as you're watching the video. You can scroll down and reference certain parts of the meeting as you're watching. I think the most convenient aspect of the video is this video index down here. So let's say I want to reference a specific ordinance that was discussed in the latest meeting. I can scroll down right here. Let's say I want to look at the adoption of Robert's Rules of Order. I can click on that part, and it automatically fast-forwarded me to that part in the meeting.
I don't know why anybody would want to click on that one.
Random choice. But it's extremely convenient. At times, you'll notice we might have meetings up to about three hours or so, give or take, and that could be a lot of footage to sift through. Say, you know, maybe Morgan right here would want to sift through and reference a specific part of the meeting. Now, you can actually just click on that specific title under the video index, and it'll automatically fast-forward or rewind you to that port, that part of the meeting. So extremely convenient features right here. Again, you can watch it full-size, you can watch it back in the window pane. One of the other exciting features, I think, because I'm in communications and marketing, and I love to share information, is the Share This Video tab. So again, you can start from the top and include the entire video by just selecting the link. If you copy and paste it, you can send it to email, you can copy and paste it, if I had a keyboard, I would do that for you, into your web browser. Or the, this is an interesting part, you can start a video at a specific part in the video. So if I, again, wanted to refer, let's choose a different ordinance. We'll look at the budget. We'll click on this one. So do you see it automatically adjusted the timestamp right here? If you lock that in, it automatically adjusted the URL link as well. So you can copy that URL and send that to maybe friends, family, or people that you think would find that particular part of the meeting relevant. So I'll just quickly go through the rest of the sharing. You can, of course, send the entire meeting through email, Facebook, if you have a Facebook account, if you have a Twitter, if you have a LinkedIn, you can send it that way as well. Embed is a specific URL code that you can use on the backend of your website. If you're a business, if you're, if you just have a website and you want to share the meeting with others, you can do so on your webpage. And then last but not least, you can actually download the actual MPS version, or MP4 version of the meeting. And then again, you can select a specific section of the, or Agenda item of the meeting that you'd like to download as well. So lots of features. Of course, we're still working on fully integrating it with iCompass Agenda software, but this is available right now to the public, and we're excited to have that. So I will go back to my presentation and take any questions if you guys have any.
I just want to briefly commend your staff for doing a lot of this legwork, primarily Josh. He's been really, really involved with this from the get-go for a while. This actually is his last council meeting as well. He'll be leaving us.
This is my parting gift.
Yeah. He'll be, he'll be leaving us for personal reasons, but we're grateful for your work and your involvement in helping the transition from OC's vision to the, for some of this to now it's an implementation phase. So thank you for your hard work. I know you and Micah recently received some awards as well, and so we're fortunate to have both of you, but you specifically, especially with this being our last council meeting, I think it's important that we also thank you publicly for your work in helping us be more transparent and accessible. So thank you.
It's natural to clap. All right. Any other questions?
Keep in mind that you do have your one-on-one training coming up, so if you think of questions leading up to then, they can be addressed at that time.
I do have one. There, I think you indicated there is a way that we can make notes to ourselves as we refer to the, review the packet.
There is a way to do that, and the functionality is having some technical difficulty at the moment. That is not one of the features that we are currently rolling out until we can cross over those technical hurdles. So we may or may not ultimately roll out that functionality.
So paper and pencil has not yet been completely replaced.
Has not. Well, I will give you a set of sticky notes you can stick to the screen of your iPad if that will help. No. There are, there are still a lot of hurdles, and I thank you for bringing up, that is a difficult question for me to address. There are other issues that we are still clearing hurdles on. Like I said, we are not at the finish line yet, but I have a great staff working on this, and I have no doubt that we're going to get this thing fully rolled out very soon.
How do the presentations that get done by staff get incorporated into this documentation?
I would like to see them attached as PowerPoints directly into this system. I believe that they can be attached as a document, just like any other PDF could be done, so long as they are prepared in the timeframe necessary. I'm guilty of sometimes preparing my PowerPoints on the last day. I would not be able to do that.
Yeah, and we should be able to add them as well. So you may recall, there was a portion of the software where there was like three links. There was the link to the memo, a link to the ordinance. There should be a way to incorporate another link that would be the PowerPoint, and then that way, we kind of piece all those together.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Where's the follow the city manager link?
Here we go.
Yeah, no.
So if you, if you look back here at the screen, at the city of Victoria draft, here's what he's talking about. You've got, within the draft, and I'm actually looking at that sample Agenda from before, where you have the supporting documents attached as hyperlinks, we believe that we'll be able to drop in the PowerPoint presentations right there, and they will be accessible. Even if they are not ready at the time you get your packet, we can still add those later, and they will be available in the public copy later. Thank you.
Think, are you ready to take us into executive session?
I am. It seems like you must be.
All right.
Transition back over here in order to read the announcement for executive session. So the City Council will recess now for executive session on the third day of December 2019 at 6:22 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code Section 551.087, to discuss or deliberate the offer to a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the City Council seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the city of Victoria and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations. And secondly, Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. Thank you.
And I understand there'll be no action taken after this executive session, so for all practical purposes, we're going upstairs and will not return.
Upstairs to my comfort room.